I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, united, in the great majority of the citizens. Good evening, and I'd like to welcome everyone here in the audience tonight, and it's always good to have guests present. So with that, I would ask for the clerk to do the roll call.
Billbrook?
Here.
Brockmeyer?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
Dorisso?
Here.
Downey?
Here.
Hyger?
Here.
Oswald?
Here.
May all eight present. If everybody has had an opportunity to take a look at the minutes, I will now make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. The motion has been made by Alderman Dorisso, second by Alderman Hyger, that we approve the budget officer's report, treasurer's report, police report, approval of bills, approval of Lake Fields, Lake Ahot bill, Lake Watershed bill. There is no objection, and there are none. The clerk will call the roll.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brockmeyer?
Yes.
Dorisso?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Hyger?
Yes.
Oswald?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brockmeyer?
Yes.
Dorisso?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Hyger?
Yes.
Oswald?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Downey?
Yep.
Dorisso?
Aye.
Oswald?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brockmeyer?
Yes.
Dorisso?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Hyger?
Yes.
Oswald?
Aye. Motion has been made by Alderman Dorisso, second by Alderman Hyger, that we approve the budget officer's report, treasurer's report, police report, approval of bills, approval of Lake Fields, Lake Ahot bill, Lake Watershed bill. There is no objection, and there are none. The clerk will call the roll.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brockmeyer?
Yes.
Dorisso?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Hyger?
Yes.
Oswald?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Downey?
Yep.
Dorisso?
Aye.
Oswald?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Dorisso?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brockmeyer?
Aye.
Dorisso?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Hyger?
Yes.
Oswald?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Dorisso?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brockmeyer?
Yes.
Dorisso?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Oswald?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Dorisso?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Dorisso?
Aye.
Brockmeyer?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brockmeyer?
Yes.
Dorisso?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Hyger?
Yes.
Anybody come back?
Please.
Campbell?
Aye.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Hyger?
Yes.
Okay, motion has been carried, eight to zero. Okay, next on the agenda is the ordinance providing the regulation and the application of small wireless facilities. This is also a separate read, and if there are no questions, we can make a motion to go ahead and approve the ordinance regulating and providing for the regulation of an application for small wireless facilities.
Mayor, I would move that we send the ordinance as presented for the regulation application for small wireless facilities.
Okay, motion has been made by Alderman Dorisso, second by Alderman Oswald, that we go ahead and approve the ordinance providing regulation and application for small wireless facilities. If there's no other questions, the clerk will call the roll.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Brockmeyer?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dorisso?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brockmeyer?
Aye.
Dorisso?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brockmeyer?
Aye.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brockmeyer?
Yes.
Dorisso?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Hyger?
Yes.
Oswald?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Brockmeyer?
Aye.
Dorisso?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brockmeyer?
Aye.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Downey?
Aye.
Hyger?
Yes.
Any other questions on this?
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brockmeyer?
Aye.
Dorisso?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Hyger?
Yes.
Okay, motion has been carried, eight to zero. Okay, next on the agenda is the ordinance providing the regulation and the application of small wireless facilities. This is also a separate read, and if there are no questions, we can make a motion to go ahead and approve the ordinance regulating and providing for the regulation of an application for small wireless facilities.
Mayor, I would move that we send the ordinance as presented for the regulation application for small wireless facilities.
Okay, motion has been made by Alderman Dorisso, second by Alderman Oswald, that we go ahead and approve the ordinance providing regulation and application for small wireless facilities. If there's no other questions, the clerk will call the roll.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Brockmeyer?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dorisso?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brockmeyer?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brockmeyer?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Dorisso?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dorisso?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is the clerk and deputy clerk computer upgrade. Call me when you want to address this.
Uh-oh.
Okay.
In the finance, it was brought to us that Carla and Jewel need new computers. Their emails aren't working. There's all kinds of things that can't be fixed. Their computers are like five or six years old. The finance recommends that we upgrade their computers, and it was contingent on it. There was money, and there is money. It shows the amount due is $2,119.96 to upgrade these. So I make the motion that we upgrade to the all's computers, to computers.
Okay, motion has been made by Alderman Oswald, second by Alderman Dorisso, that we go ahead and upgrade the clerk and deputy clerk computers at the amount of $3,119.96. There are no other questions. Clerk, call the roll.
Campbell?
Aye.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Oswald?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Dorisso?
Aye.
Brockmeyer?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brockmeyer?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Brockmeyer?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brockmeyer?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brockmeyer?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Okay, motion has been carried, eight to zero. Okay, next on the agenda is the ordinance providing the regulation and the application of small wireless facilities. This is also a separate read, and if there are no questions, we can make a motion to go ahead and approve the ordinance regulating and providing for the regulation of an application for small wireless facilities.
Mayor, I would move that we send the ordinance as presented for the regulation application for small wireless facilities.
Okay, motion has been made by Alderman Dorisso, second by Alderman Oswald, that we go ahead and approve the ordinance providing regulation and application for small wireless facilities. If there's no other questions, the clerk will call the roll.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Brockmeyer?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dorisso?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brockmeyer?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brockmeyer?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
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 Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
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 Campbell?
Aye.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
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 Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
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 Billbrook?[1025.12] I, I am quite confident that I am not, because I'm already having fee and damage demands made on me. So I am quite confident that these are not going away.
And as for every time we have to go to court, or pay somebody to respond, we're spending more money. Why don't we just send it, and if we have to pay damages, figure out what we owe and be done?
If we concede, okay, those records, then we have conceded that if there was withholding, which there was not, okay, that was willful. It is only on that basis that they get fees, is if they can show it was willful. We had a lawful basis for withholding records in two of them, the first one and Lisa Thomas. We have yet to put on our affirmative defense, and I'm not going to discuss it in public session, on the other three.
It just seems a waste of taxpayers' money to keep...
The waste of taxpayers' money is what the watchdogs are attempting to do to the community, that's what the waste of taxpayers' money is. And any sug- any suggestion...
That's your stand, however...
Any suggestion that they are anything other than political terrorists is just absurd. They're not trusted advisors to anyone.
And I, I appreciate your opinion, I don't agree with your opinion, however, I think that someone has requested documents, and we're not giving them to them, and I, I really feel if we give them the documents, this will go away.
You absolutely do not know what you are talking about, because we have not presented our defenses in those other three cases. You simply do not know. Now, if you're doing their bidding, please just say so.
I am not doing their bidding, I'm doing the city's bidding. No, sir, I'm doing the city's bidding...
No, ma'am, I am doing the city's bidding, and I'm doing my best to walk you away from this without having to pay money. But it's very difficult to do...
Are you waiving your fees?
No, I'm not.
Then we are spending a lot of city money, to fight something that I think we're going to lose in the end.
Well, if you're trusting the advice of Mr. Kraft and Mr., uh, Allen...
I'm trusting the advice of the Illinois law that says if somebody's requested documents, we have to turn them over.
No, it's not like that, sir.
Okay, well, you explain it in executive session, please, because I do not...
I, no, I, you know, I am not going to discuss the settlement proposal that we are going to make at any meeting where you are present. And if the council wants to fire me, they can fire me.
That'd be a good idea.
You're supposed to be here for the council in the meeting.
I am.
No.
I am.
She's part of the council.
No, I am...
I'm part of the council.
My job is to represent the Freedom of Information Act officer, and that is Carla.
Please, okay, any other questions? Moving on, we are going to go to, um, new business, and that is the, uh, hiring of a replacement for a full-time police officer.
Cindy, is that you? Earlier this month, we had, uh, one of our full-time officers, he took another job, so he has been gone. The department has been using part-time and overtime to cover some of those shifts, so, um, we're looking to go back up to full capacity for staffing for the police department, so we're looking to go back up to twelve officers. Um, so just replacing the one that we have lost, um, keeping in mind that there are a couple others that possibly may, um, move on at some point to other things, so we don't want to be short-staffed already. Um, so this officer would come in at a lower rate per hour than our previous one, and he would have one year of no vacation, so, um, there would be some savings there, although I know it is an expense, and those are our concern as well. But I do think that public safety is one of the burdens of the city, and something we, um, we need to be mindful of in how we spend our money. So I would like to make a motion with, oh, I should say too, that it came out of committee with, we had one absent in committee, it came out with three yes and one no, um, from public safety last week, um, so I'd like to just make a motion that we, um, allow the chief to, um, seek with the police commissioner about getting a new part-time, or full-time officer hired.
Hey, is that a motion, Cindy? Okay, motion has been made by Alderman Campbell, second by Alderman Oswald, that we go ahead and hire a replacement, I believe this is for Officer Wolford?
Yes.
And, uh, as a full-time police officer, bringing our total up to twelve officers, um, on, for our, uh, police department. Is there any comments?
I would just like to say also, um, just publicly thank Officer Wolford for his service to the city, he was an excellent officer, and we're sorry to lose him, but we're happy that he's gone on to new things, so we just wanted to say thank you for, for his service.
I think we all do, yes, thank you, uh, yes.
I have something to say. I feel personally at this time, with the added expenses of all the unnecessary lawsuits and other monies going out, that we really can't afford to replace and further stress our pension at this time, and I think we should table this matter.
Okay, Alderman Campbell?
Well, I think we can table it, if we have the motion in a second, but I would like to just say that I really don't think that the citizens of Carlingville should suffer, or the police department should be put in any danger in their jobs, because we have some kind of disagreement about FOIA requests. So I just want to make sure we don't confuse the two issues. The council is having a problem, public safety is a priority, let's keep those separated from this.
We do have a motion on the table, we have a motion by Alderman Campbell, second by Alderman Oswald, um...
Comment, Mayor, I mean, this is not, nothing to do with, uh, the FOIA request, but I, as I do every time we want to hire an officer, I make sure it understands that we have a huge liability in our police pension fund, currently at three-point-seven million dollars as of last year. Uh, we do get a yearly, uh, statement from the Department of Insurance, when I joined the council, it was two-point-one million, it is now three-point-seven. So it's almost doubled in my five years here. I know we didn't make an additional payment last year, and a smaller payment the year before, but our payments are being outstripped by the cost of the rising pension funds. Now, I am by no means opposed to public safety, but I think we need to seriously address our pension fund, uh, before it gets out of hand. Like everything else, it's kicked down the road, and it's hoped that someone else will fix it. That has come to nigh, I think we need to really seriously do that. I've been to this council multiple times, no one has really done anything about it, mostly the only one I've talked to really don't give a care, so, they just... And again, I know public safety is number one priority, but if we have no funds to pay for these people, then we seriously need to look at what this cost is. Now, obviously, it costs, I think Claudia told me before she left, it's thirty, or excuse me, twenty-two thousand dollars for pension per officer, that's just the pension. In addition to that, you have salary, benefits, and car. So, like I do every time, that's my spiel, you pull it the way you want to, but I think we should really look at this pension before taking a further action.
Alderman Hygbert, I think you had your hands up.
Uh, yes, I did, it's not about the FOIA, it's about the money. We have to look at money here, we are spending money left and right, it is time for us to tighten up and do things the right way. When I first was elected, we couldn't spend any money, because there wasn't any coming down from the state. Now, all of a sudden, it's like, let's buy, spend, do whatever, be frivolous. We all hear you.
Okay.
Well, I wouldn't call a police officer frivolous, is my only point, so I would say that I understand that the pension is, is an issue, and I, I do think the city is trying to make additional payments into that. I agree with Doug that we need to come up with some kind of plan, and maybe we need to work on how we want to address that in the future, if we want, I mean, there's, it's not like there's never going to be another officer that leaves the force, but I don't think that it's something you just decide, well, we're just not going to staff at full staff, we're not going to plan ahead to look at our staffing and see where we might be able to reduce shifts or something, we're just going to not staff it. Um, I think, um, I just want people to consider that if you want to do a proactive plan to take a look at the hours that we have, and how many shifts we have, and things like that, certainly, we can, we can do a project to do that, but, um, right now, I think it's important to have full staff, and, um, that's my motion.
I guess there's a, there's, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Joanie, do you recall what we're paying on the pension, or maybe chief can tell us, are we at, what, fifteen-one, fifty-five percent? Is that where we're at?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-three percent, I think, fifty-seven, I used to, they changed the actuary numbers, which dropped the balance to fifty-three percent.
I thought we were, uh, because when Claudia left, she said that in checking with all of the other communities or whatever, we were still higher on some of the pensions than we were with some of the other communities, and I thought, what, fifty-three now, you think? Okay, fifty-three percent, okay, there is a, did you have your hands?
Yes, ma'am, and she also added that they highly do not recommend this, that we need to do something about.
Okay, I appreciate that, okay, yes, Beth?
And, I'm just wondering and requesting, you know, you made a good suggestion, that you guys sit down and figure out a long-term plan for moving forward with maybe less staff, less spending, less something, to find a way to cut. Regardless of how this vote turns out, would you please move forward with that?
I will speak to the chief about his staffing needs, yes.
Thank you.
I don't foresee that, I mean, I don't know if you guys know what, I know, everybody thinks I just plug away for the police, but I do ride with them, and I do go in, and I don't know if you guys know how busy they are, or what's going on, but I would encourage you to get in the car and go see, and, and I think it would give you a different appreciation for what their staffing needs are. I mean, I know it is an expense, but, you know, that is the, that is the goal of what we do here, is to provide infrastructure and public safety. Those are our highest priorities as a city government, so I just think we have to figure out how to prioritize the things that are, that are important. Um, so sure, I would be happy to talk to the chief about his staff needs, and we can see how, how we can maybe find ways to make additional payments into that pension, but, you know, I think it's, I think it would be, um, imprecise to say that there's going to be a point here soon where public safety is going to be, people are suddenly going to be more safe, and we're going to need less police officers all the time. So, I don't know, I think it's a tough issue, I'm not saying that it's simple, but, um, we can talk about it, sure.
There has been a motion, uh, by Alderman Campbell, second by Alderman Oswald, uh, to go ahead and hire a replacement, full-time police officer. If there's no other discussion on the floor, the clerk will call the roll.
Oswald?
Aye.
Bilbrook?
No.
Brockmeyer?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Downey?
No.
D'Arison?
Aye.
Tim?
No.
Hygbert?
No.
For four, there's a tie, and I vote yes, to go ahead and hire a new officer. Okay, any other comments? Any comments on the floor, if not, I would like to...
motion adjourned.
I would now make a motion to adjourn. Motion has been made by Ald...
No, okay.
No, no one seconded it. Motion has been made by Alderman Daley, second by Alderman Oswald, there are no...